Architecture Review and Planning Board. Rita.
Mr. Dockerty.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Roche.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Chairman Kent.
Here.
Let the record show that Town Manager Dunham and Town Attorney John Randolph and Staff Attorney Trey Nazaro are both, all three present. Oh, and the two aldermen, I'm sorry. You made me sorry. Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Smith and myself.
Thank you very much, Rita. And let's see here. Okay, included in our package was a draft of the minutes of our December 28 meeting. Are there any revisions to the draft or will it be accepted as presented?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roche.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Chairman Kent.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita. Next item on the agenda is if we have any, Rita, do we have any additions, withdrawals, deferrals, or rearrangement of the agenda items?
No, not this time anyway.
Okay. Let's see here. We have the meeting days coming up for February, March, April, May, and June. Rita, does it look as though we'll have applications for all the meetings?
Well, I think we're going to have one for the next meeting. I'm not positive, but I know we'll have one for the March meeting.
Okay. Well, next we have our project. Those ones on the other.
Yeah.
So that, I think we should have the meetings. So even if there are no applications, we get through our project. That would be appropriate. So are there any major conflicts with any of the meetings? Do we have, you have that? Yes.
I have, I have done this meeting also.
Okay.
I'm May in June.
Oh, okay.
And I have March.
Yeah, I may have May too. I've got to check the dates.
Maybe we should move it up a week in May if possible. We can talk about that. It could be the next meeting or something.
A little closer.
Maybe move it this week.
Maybe move it up a week or something. But right now for April, I guess.
March is March.
March, I'm sorry, March. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing portion of the meeting. And I don't think we have our applicants yet.
No.
So I think we should move, to keep everything moving along, we should, if it's suitable to do so, rearrange the order. And maybe address, I think that the one we're doing. You'll be presenting on the re-landscaping of.
Yes. For the two, 2929 and 3655.
Okay. Could we have, I'm so sorry, we left out squaring in everybody who plans on speaking.
Yeah, well, of course.
We're gonna have to do that again, but.
Actually, the presenters for.
The card is 1330 North Ocean.
Are we waiting on Carlos?
Well, he's the one that we need right now.
Yeah, the card is pulled in, so.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I skipped, I have an agenda. First of all, we need to have a declaration of any extracurricular communication. And I spoke with staff. Okay. Let's see. Well, we have two choices. Did we, did one of our applicants pull in just now?
Let me go see.
I don't know.
Okay, let me go see.
But we do have the applicants for the two following.
The two following, yes. So let's see. Well, in that case, would everybody who plans on speaking in the meeting stand up and be sworn in? For sure, you might as well do it. Okay.
Carlos is walking in.
Oh, Carlos.
You want to wait for him or you want to do it again?
Good run guys.
Let's do it again.
All right. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you done?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see here. In that case. Yes, let's, yes. Let's move item number two on the agenda up to the first, to our first item discussion.
That's D2, right?
Sorry.
D2.
D2.
Yeah.
So. Just so we get all the squaring in out of the way. Mr. Lenares, if you could, he's sworn in.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you done?
Thank you.
Let's see here. We have an application submitted by M O U W Associates, Inc., as agent for BW North Ocean Inc. for the property located at 1330 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida. Legally described as Lot 77A, Greenfield, Donald, D make the subdivision recorded in plaque of 25, page 67 of the public records of Palm Beach, Florida. It's a level three architectural site plan, renewed commencing installation of flat gray through and through slate, light color, unsoated tile on the roof of the existing commuter, one-story, single-family dwelling located at, at least addressed 1330 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida. Florida's here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know if everybody can see this, but. Brother happy. Good morning. My name is H. Adola from M L Associates, some project manager. And I'm here for a color change on the tile. Was white and I would like to go with this color here, slate, gray slate. It's a 13-inch tile. It was a 13-inch tile and we're just changing the color. It's an integra tile. I know it's been used in the neighborhood around. Mr. Beads, I believe, has one in his house. We're trying to copy his place.
Just to fill in every, anything, anything other than white, color through tile, black tile requires an architectural review, plan, etc.
That's the reason.
That's the reason? Yes. What color is the house?
Well, right now, the color of the house is going to change to whatever color that roof tile is going to change to. I've already spoke to the owner and she's going to coordinate with whatever is comparable, whatever colors the committee allows to coordinate with the new tile. Color of the house right now is a light yellow, if you will. Is that correct?
Okay. The, just an informal survey of the neighborhood. There are, that includes subdivision. We have five white tile roofs and five gray tile roofs. And so it's about even. This house would.
Would be nice to break the tie.
I think it says on, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change.
Oh, okay. Any comments?
Were the neighbors notified or they not have to be notified?
Yes, everyone was required to be notified once sent.
And there's no.
I've had no, no unimpories.
Then I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Oh, Rita.
Mr. Dockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roche.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Chairman Kent.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, did you have, were you presenting on?
Yeah, we were going to present the back patio, but your architect hasn't showed up yet.
Oh, okay. All right. Will you be presenting to any other part of the application?
I will be up here with him as his assistant.
Okay. All right. Okay, so one item off the list.
I was feeling.
If not, we will be.
So if we go back now to item one on the agenda. Which is the application by Mr. Lenares, Randall Stop Architects, as agent for North Ocean Boulevard, or North Ocean Capital, 2929 B LLC, owner of the property located at 2929 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida, 6483, legally described as the south 120 feet of block on of Gulfstream Ocean Track, reported in plaque book 16, page 81 of the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida. And we have revisions to the original plan review on December 28th, 17.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Name is Carlos Lenares. I'm with Randall Stop Architects. We had presented this project on our previous meeting since we have addressed comments that were, that were discussed. And I would like to present a revised elevations to you guys, obviously. Same, the same colors, but there were windows that were in question, heights as well. And we have done that since. Okay. On, on the last meeting, there were a mist of discouraged items that were being discussed. Some were negative, some were positive. But we have addressed the majority of the, of these discouraged items from the previous meeting. The first one that was discouraged is obviously the second, second floor eve, eve height, which is one that I sort of wanted to try to maintain. Obviously, we've always tried to keep the higher ceilings for, for our homes. I, I think that that gives the grand feel for the house itself. So on, on this elevation and, and on our proposal, we are proposing to, to try to maintain that second floor eve height at the, at the same level that we previously had. We have addressed the, the window. The gatehouse has been addressed. And we have lowered the, the structure of it down to 10 foot, a 10-foot eve height at its maximum. We have still be keeping, in keeping the, the same style architecture, but we've lowered the mass, which was previously stipulated as a was discouraged item. Third one is the, another gable. We, we had a little positive feedback from you guys as far as, you know, that you guys might have been open to, to keeping that gable. I sort of struggled with that because it is a nice element, but I wanted to try to steer away from many discouraged items that I know we were trying to get the second floor eve height in there. And there, there's going to be one more that I would like to try to get approved today. So we've gotten rid of the gable on the garage side. And you can see on the rendering, we've done hips for the, for the whole entire architecture. Item number four was the windows. The windows, they were described as being a dominant element. And that mainly was called out for the rear elevation. And because we, we were, we were complying with the 50%, with the maximum 50% glass, but it's still read as, as if it was two-story high windows in the rear. So we've gone back and we've redesigned the rear, broken it up. Instead of having vertical elements, now we've broken it up with, with some, some horizontal details. We still have the, the louver panels underneath the second floor windows. You know, don't be misled that those are not windows. Those, those are actual decorative panels, just to, just to dress up the, the bottom of the windows. We had also had a, which is the number five, paired and triple windows. Paired and triple windows, we, we did have in the front elevation. We had since, and over to the right-hand side of the entry, that there, we used to have pairs of single, single hung windows. We have since split it up. I think the, the pilasters came into more proportion and so we have three windows being separated by, by pilasters. To the left of the, of the entry, we did have sort of a, a triple window. That wasn't separated as much as, as the right-hand side. We do have a separation of structure in there. Obviously, we are going to treat the trim, just the, the same color as the, as the windows. Therefore, it just looks like it's all one big assembly, but it is separated by, by a structure. In the rear, we did, we never did have, I don't recall that we did have triple or double windows. So that was not addressed at, at the rear of, of the, of the project. There were a couple of items as well that were not stipulated in, in writing prior to this, but it was, it was mentioned at the meeting that I do, I do recall, we did not show the fence at the previous site plan. Since we have shown that we, we are proposing a new fence on the north side of the property. And that is separating that, the property and the 10, 10-foot easement that is, that is there, that is outside of our property. On the, on the south side of the property, there is an existing wall and fence that we're going to be able to utilize as our property barrier for, for the project. We have also labeled a, a feature wall that we, we are proposing out here outside of the breakfast, sort of like a, like a garden wall, something that, you know, that we're going to be able to grow vines or something interesting at, at that point, more of a focal point that is sort of interrupts the fence. Obviously, you know, through the fence, there are going to be quite a bit of landscape. So I think that that's how we've addressed all the concerns from our previous meetings.
You also changed the feature over the front door from what it looked like before. It was an open.
Well, actually, the.
The roof, you've changed the roof over.
Well, no. What, what happened on, on the previous rendition that we had done, we had, see, we have an entry pavilion. And that entry pavilion was moved to the left, so it doesn't show like it's, it's superimposed onto that. If you take a look at the floor plan, let's take a look at the floor plan. We had a, a open entry pavilion that is not roofed. We had that over here. On the previous elevation, we had shown that in front of the house. This rendition, what it does show is that that is off to the side. And you can see that there's a label on the rendering that is called entry pavilion. We did change a little bit of the details on it, on the entry pavilion, but we are now showing what the entry door looks like. That, that's what we have done. We've just separated the two structures of the original confusion as far as what's what.
Well, it, it hasn't actually, it hasn't actually moved. It's just they, he put it off on the side so that he wouldn't, because now it has a wall. Before it was a lot more.
Well, yeah, if the, this, the entry structure is not attached to the house. So right now, we're just illustrating it off to the side. We're just not showing it in our elevation.
The elevation, yeah. It's just shown as a separate one. You just move it across to the side to demonstrate it separately.
Just the illustrations, that, that's all it is, just for illustration purpose.
Well, in the, in the, in the renditions, those colors. Why is it so dark in the back? Are you planning on having, having a door in the back of it or?
No, this, this is just showing the door way back. This is the front door behind it. It's just the way that it, it is shown. It's just.
It's a.
Trying to give a three-dimensional. It, it's all open.
Yes.
It's all open. There is.
But that's the way it reads on the plan, but on the elevation, it doesn't read that way.
I was just trying to do the three-dimensional effects and a some D. That, that, that's all it is. Here it is.
That's there?
Yes.
Okay. And the, and the roof material on that, well, it's not a roof, but is that?
It's wood, wood trusses.
Wood trusses?
Yes.
Not aluminum?
No.
Absolutely wood?
It's, it's all wood. It's all wood. It's, it's open. It's all open. It's, it's just got the, the little pigets in between the, the raptors, just to give it that garden feel to it.
You decided to go with a fence, not a wall on the north property line. Could you comment on that? There's a lot of walls here and you decided to go with a six-foot.
On the north?
Yeah. On the way that easement is. And that's that 10-foot easement for residents to traverse, be able to access the beach. And there, I think there's three of them here in Gulfstream. This is the middle one, although it hasn't been tended to. It's just kind of very overgrown. But I'm just curious, like the one in the south, I believe, has two walls that define it. And the next application that's coming in for the home up here by the school is, is the same situation and has the easement that we have to deal with. But it, it has a wall.
Well, here, right, right here, it's, it's a fence. It's not a wall.
Okay.
Right there, on, on the opposite side of the pedestrian.
On the south side, it's a wall.
Right, right. Just the width of, of our property. It's, that's, that's a, that's a fence right there.
Yes.
So that's why we are opposing a fence. So it just looks symmetrical on both sides of the pedestrian. Obviously, it's going to be landscaped, so it will have privacy. But, you know, it's just the, the fence and, and the landscape.
What is the ceiling height in your first floor and your second floor of this home?
Typically, we, we try to push the 12-foot ceiling heights on the first floor and 10 feet on the second floor.
Is that what it is?
Give me just one second.
I just, I, I wasn't there for the last meeting, but I did watch the video and I know we went to the, we maxed out the eve height absolutely to the, to the max.
Yes.
Right, within an inch, I believe.
Probably in 13.
So we, we have, we have 12-foot ceilings on the first floor and 10-foot ceilings on the second floor. Obviously, on the second floor is where we have the master as well. So we want to try to get a volume there as well.
Are there any more questions for the? Any comments on the application?
Oh, I just had one. It's, it's on this property, it's not specific, but Bob is one of the neighbors across the street, but one of the other neighbors talked to me and said, make sure that whatever we do, that we make sure that they maintain the aesthetics of the, of, you know, the pedestrian right away there. It's just possible access. It's not possible. It's deeded access, isn't it?
It is deeded access.
It's not really a maybe an access. It's a specific access is all.
But it's not a part of this property.
That is correct. Yeah, I just wanted to be careful. I, I, it would be nice if it, that I guess it's not part of the application, so we really shouldn't have.
It was brought up in the last meeting. I think Mr. Murphy would prefer to.
Thank you. Should we answer as per this page? Okay. I'd like to make a number of motions. The first motion, to recommend approval of a special exception to allow 220 square feet uncovered on enclosed area that exceeds the maximum permitted floor area.
Second.
Mr. Dockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roche.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Chairman Kent.
Yes.
The second motion to recommend approval of a special exception to allow the construction of 488 square foot gatehouse in the beach foot, sorry, the beach front design district.
Second. Three.
Mr. Dockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roche.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Chairman Kent.
Aye.
Third motion to recommend approval to allow construction of 488 square foot gatehouse and an eight-foot-high stucco wall within the North Ocean Boulevard corridor.
There's a little duplication there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we just combine those and?
Drop the second one and adopt the third or?
Was because it's. Okay. I'll second, I'll second.
Mr. Dockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roche.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Chairman Kent.
Aye.
And the final motion to recommend approval of level three architectural site plan based on a highly proposed construction of Gulfstream commuter-style two-story, single-family dwelling with attached three-car garage consisting of 8,925 square feet and swimming pool spa meets the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards with the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner of the property shall prepare and record a deed of destruction, which shall provide that all roof projection area shall remain unenclosed as, as per approval of a special exemption for as long as the structure is, is in existence, but exceed, or exceeds the maximum FAR. Two, any modifications in the existing landscape should be submitted to the town manager for review and approval. Any major modification should be brought back to the ARTB for review and approval prior to commencement to landscaping.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roche.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Chairman Kent.
Aye.
You're all set? That's it?
Now the next one.
Now we, now we have, we've got this one under your belt. Next on the agenda is an application submitted by Carlos Lenares, Randall Stop Architects. As agent for North Ocean Capital, 3565 B LLC, owner of the property located at 3565 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida, legally described as a portion of Lot 78 of Gulfstream Ocean Track, according to the file reported in the fourth, page 16, page, plaque 16, page 81. And a portion of Lot 910, Lot B of Lot 8A, E and Z, Palm Beach Shore Acres, according to the plaque reported in plaque book 7, page 15, public records of Palm Beach County, and a portion of right-of-way of North Ocean Boulevard, and for the following. A special exception, number one, to permit an additional 197 square feet uncovered, unenclosed floor area. unenclosed floor area exceeds the maximum of FAR of seven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square feet. B, special exception number two, to permit construction of a four hundred and sixty-seven foot gatehouse in the beachfront design district, and C, North Ocean Boulevard totally permit to permit the construction of a four hundred and sixty-seven foot gatehouse and an eight foot high stucco wall within the North Ocean Boulevard corridor. And D, a level three architectural site plan, or D, permit construction of a two-story British colonial style single-family dwelling with detached garage and a detached gatehouse, a total of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-six square feet and swimming pool with a spa.
For, for this, uh, project, uh, we've also, uh, included, um, covered renderings of the, uh, the proposed. We also have a, uh, color, word, describing the colors that we are proposing for, for the home. Okay, um, a project that we, we are presenting today is thirty-five sixty-five North Ocean Boulevard, uh, single-family house, two-story home, uh, with a detached, uh, gate, gatehouse at, at the front. Um, the style of this, um, uh, architecture is a British colo- colonial. Um, it's, uh, consisting of a, um, approximately fifty-nine hundred, uh, square feet A C. Um, the, the, uh, uh, project that, that we are proposing is, is, it's got a three-car garage, uh, swimming pool on the fir-, on the first floor, um, family room, living room foyer, um, master bedroom, uh, on the first floor for this particular, uh, project, uh, guest bedroom and, uh, three additional bedrooms, uh, on the second floor. Um, the, the, uh, project, um, has, uh, you know, uh, quite, quite a bit of, uh, details and contrasts, uh, that, that we are proposing. We are proposing a, um, a dark gray charcoal, uh, roof, uh, for, for the house. We are, uh, proposing, um, light stucco, uh, color, um, for, for the home, white windows. Uh, there is a little bit of, uh, 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 detail that we're going to implement on, on this one that, uh, that, that we've, um, like to, will try to accomplish, is like a, a, a brick mold, uh, that is going to separate the windows, uh, from the stucco, which is going to be a, a dark, uh, brick mold, probably like a, like a light, uh, 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 gray. Um, it's, it's, it appears a little darker than, than what we wanted to be, um, on the rendering. Um, all the trims, um, uh, pilasters, corbels, rafters, uh, will also be, uh, pure white, um, just to get a, uh, the contrast that we're trying to achieve from the stucco, uh, to the, to the, to the windows and, and the trims. Um, like I said, it is the charcoal, uh, gray, uh, roof tile. Um, and, uh, we are also, um, implementing, uh, some louvered, um, details paneling that is going to have, uh, a, a little bit of a gray stain to them, uh, in, in order to complement the, uh, the front door and, uh, order to go, in order to complement the, uh, the garage doors, which is not illustrated on this, on this rendering. Um, the, the second floor is, 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 is pretty small compared to the, to the footprint of the house, which, which is pretty, pretty nice, um, um, layout, I, I, I believe. Um, let me see, it's, it's, it's got, uh, beautiful brackets, uh, as far as the details, pilasters. Uh, I, I think that we steer away from the double and, and, and the triple windows, uh, throughout the, the house. We've also done the calculation on the, on the rear of the house for the, uh, glass to, to wall ratio, and I believe we passed, I don't, I don't have a record of what percentage we came in here, but we, we did, um, uh, submit that to, to the town as well. The, uh, the, the, the property is, is, um, obviously, we're proposing the, the gatehouse at the front with a privacy wall, uh, at the front as well, that is going to tie in to, uh, existing walls on the south, on the south and on the, uh, on the north properties. Uh, those, those walls are existing and we're, uh, intending to maintain those. Um, obviously, you know, we've landscaped, um, uh, tho- those walls as well. Uh, landscape architect is here as well to, uh, to talk about the, the, the landscape.
On the, uh, on the gatehouse, the wall facing A one A has a peculiar, look like a series of letter N's or something on it, and I don't understand what that design feature is all about. It's on A three oh three at the top. Sort of repeated a little bit on the side of this feature here.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what, what we're accomplishing with that.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, Tom, if they're like, they're like, ends or, or slats and then, and diagonal slats?
Um, that, that is a, a bay, a bay window, um, that, that, uh, uh, I'm sorry, not a bay window, but if you are able to, uh, look at this bathroom here, that is what those slats are. Uh, they are going to be the same stain as the, uh, as the louver, uh, that we do have on the, uh, the front door. Um, and it's just a, a, a little bit of a contrast from the, uh, the rest of the, uh, stucco and landscape. It's just a, a, an architectural feature right there. Um, but it is a wall and it's just a, a clay.
Can I draw your attention to the rear elevations, please? That's different to this in terms of, it's an inset here on the, can you see? Does it, I think, does it, those are different, as well? So it's, 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 there's a recess there at the side there, which is, and also the windows are different.
Yes, there, there are inconsistencies between the color rendering and the, and the elevation on the land. It looks like there were some.
Three identical sized windows versus three different, and there's an overhang there on the one reason and the other.
Which is the one that we're proposing?
We are proposing the, the color elevation.
Color elevation.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Okay?
Yep.
No, the color elevation, I do have.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a black and white.
There's no recess in the three of them.
Oh, I see, okay. Um, it, it's not a recess, it's an overhang, it's an overhang that we are proposing on, on, on the rendering. Correct.
I have a question, uh, about the, you know, the height of this house may well be within, within the legal limits. However, the, the, uh, the texture of this piece of property rises up quite a steep hill. And it appears to me, especially from your, this photo here or this, uh, depiction of what the house is gonna look like from the front, that it looks like the house is going to domineer A one A coming right over those trees that are in the front. And, you know, I, I think both houses on either side are one-story houses, aren't they? And, uh, I think that this is gonna give it such a massive view, it's such a massive, you know, um, feeling that it's going to, um, gonna be impressive.
Is that what you're referring?
Uh, yeah, I'm talking about how high, because the, the slope of that property is, uh, is very aggressive.
Yeah, the, 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 obviously, the, the, um, finished floor of the house has to be at, uh, at, at, at that particular elevation, uh, just because, you know, obviously it's gonna meet the flood requirements. Um, uh, the second floor is, is not, is not a big volume, uh, but I could definitely take a look at and, and see how we could maybe, um, address the, uh, the ceiling height, uh, for, for the, uh, second floor. Um, currently, we have, um, it's a little lower than the, the previous project. It's, uh, it's only nine foot six. Um, um, but I guess we are able to maybe bring down the, uh, the, the second floor in order to be able to, um, to get a, a, a lower second floor, uh, if, if that helps.
I think what, I'm not sure it will help, but, uh, I think what you're hearing is, um, you're asking for, um, eve heights and, and the building massing to read on a, on a relatively narrow lot. Um, I think what we really have to address here is whether, um, you can, uh, whether this property warrants, uh, going into the discouraged range on eve heights. Um, there are a number of different vertical massing issues with the building that I think need to be addressed, uh, starting in the front, with the gatehouse, the wall appears to be at, at actually nine feet over grade, eight feet over the, um, which is higher than allowed. Um, the gatehouse, the, uh, the eve height in the gatehouse is measured from the finished floor, but the problem is the gatehouse is set up so high that when you look at the gatehouse from the front street, the eve appears to be fourteen feet tall, or in other words, there's fourteen feet of wall. I think that there are numerous different, uh, vertical elevation issues that all the board members have a great deal of concern with. So, that's, uh, I, I need to say for everybody, but that's what I'm feeling from this.
Yes, that's, that's my feeling.
Okay, well, uh, the, the wall, we are calling it out, uh, to be a eight-foot maximum. Um, I'm not sure if, if it's.
So, so you're looking at, you're looking at this here as being the eve height in the back, but the fact that the property slopes down, now you see it more, more exposed on the front, that's your concern. As opposed, if this height was here, yeah, I, I, you see what you're saying?
Correct, um, yeah, we could definitely look, look into bringing down the, the, the gatehouse, uh, as, as well. Uh, right now, we, we, we are proposing an eleven-foot, uh, eve height that could, uh, become ten, and obviously, uh, I'm not quite sure if we are able to bring down the, uh, the, the finished floor of the gatehouse. I, I don't see why not, I, I don't see why we would not be able to. Um, so we, we are able to bring down the floor as well as the eve height, uh, for the, for the gate. Uh, so that, that should, uh, alleviate a little bit of the massing, um, from the street side, obviously, um, correct. Um, the, the, the fini- the finished floor of, of the house, um, I, I know it does impact, um, quite a bit as far as the, the massing goes, um, but like, like I, like I said, uh, we, we could definitely look into the second floor, bringing, bringing that down as well.
In the main house?
In the main house.
But, but you're gonna be talking about six inches probably, I mean, right?
Well, um, right now, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be probably anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four inches I could probably, uh, deal with on, on the, uh, uh, overall massing. Um, you know, floor to floor, we could, we could probably take, uh, six or twelve inches from there. And then on the ceilings on the second floor, obviously, the, uh, uh, the master on this particular project is down, so, but, you know, that does not, uh, hurt the, the, uh, uh, the, the architecture that, that drastically. It's, uh, secondary bedrooms that are upstairs. Uh, we could definitely have, um, you know, uh, bolted ceilings and start at the, uh, at the nine-foot, uh, break line and then go, go up inside only, so then the, um, uh, the volume is, is able to go down as, 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 uh, you guys were pointing out. I could definitely look into that.
I'd love to hear.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. I'd love to hear other comments.
I have a question on the, on the south side. What is the slope of the, the pitch and whatever you call it, of that roof on the south side of the house?
On the south side of that house?
The lower part of the roof?
Roof over the master bedroom area looks like.
It's the same, um, well, there, there is on the, on the front, there is a gable that's, uh, shallower. Everything else, we are proposing it for, for everything to be the same pitch, which is, uh, seven and twelve pitch throughout. Seven and twelve?
Think back to the gatehouse just for a minute, I think that the rear elevation is sort of the heightened and look you would probably, we probably prefer on the front and, and not something three or four feet taller on the street side. And, you know, in your A three oh three, the middle picture is attractive, but the, the gatehouse front elevation is, is gonna be very large, it's masked now with a couple of palm trees in the rendering, it's, it's, it's gonna stick up there pretty high. Maybe they have to excavate on the rear side a little to drop it down to a three feet.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we are already driving below the, uh, the driveway. Obviously, you have to slope that driveway quite a bit. We still, uh, able to, we maintain a five percent going up to that driveway, um, because of, of how, how much the, uh, the road drops here, believe it or not, the, the road is lower here than on the previous project. Far above, I, I can't remember, it was, uh, either a foot or two feet, uh, but it is a, a, a pretty big drop. Um, the finished floors on both projects, obviously, we, we maintain at the same level. Um, but because of that, that's where you see the, uh, the differences in heights. Um, we, we will go ahead and, and, um, uh, lower the, uh, the gatehouse structure. Um, you know, I, I do understand how we're going up the hill and, uh, we're definitely going to be able to act, have access to the gatehouse, you know, maybe a few more steps than, uh, what, uh, we've already shown.
What is the grade change from the road to, to the finished floor of the?
It's about ten feet, ten feet from the finished floor to the road.
And you mentioned that we're gonna take, that is what you're proposing.
Yes, sir.
What's the detail on the top of the chimney, because is that what you're going with, or you're going with a cat chimney as per the?
No, no, we're, we are going to go with a, with a, uh, clay pot, uh, on top of the chimney, uh, in order to match the, uh, uh, the, the roof tile.
Okay, it's just that in the elevations, of course, it's a cat chimney throughout.
The, the, this is, uh, the, uh, rendering is, is the, um, what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
There's no, um, evidence of, of a fence or anything on the south border of the property, and again, we have another pedestrian easement there. Uh, I don't think this even depicts any offense at all of any kind, but a wall. It's just a, it's just a setback line now, or?
Do you propose it to be open?
Well, um, you know, it's something that we have discussed with, with the owner. Um, again, it's, it's just something that, um, uh, that has not been finalized with him, whether, I guess we would have to do a fence there, um, rather than, than, than a wall, just because, you know, it, it, it does fall inside the property, uh, the, the easement, um, and we're gonna have to, uh, divide it and, and, and have it, have that be in private.
That one is used a lot, you may not know that, but that's the most used deeded access in the town, and it's, it's people there every weekend. That one is used a lot. You may not know that, but that's the most used needed access in the town, and it's, it's people there every weekend. Cars and bikes and sometimes cars that the police department gets out of there. So, so if you, if you want to let the owner know that they're gonna want some sort of privacy, wall, hedge, fence or something along there.
Okay.
Could you also raise below that, you see top of the wall extending down through the?
This is an existing wall and I'm not quite.
No, 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 if you go right to the western end, to the western end. There, that's, it looks like a wall there. Yes, yeah, okay.
Did you just eliminate it? Did you just eliminate that wall?
Is that okay?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, I would require your comment on that if there's not a comment.
That's, that was gonna be the last comment we were gonna make. They need access. Let's see, end of Rita.
I have a question for Carl. You and I spoke about the chimney heights. Did we lower the chimney there?
We, we did, we did lower the chimney. You know, the, the, the code stipulates that the, the maximum, including architectural features, does not go beyond the, the thirty-five foot height limit. Obviously, by code, you have to be two feet above your roof. So, so the chimney is, is right at, at thirty-five feet. The only item that would be beyond that point is, is a glating, a clay pot. I'm not quite sure how, you know, how we can address that, whether that may be something that would be okay.
How tall is the clay pot?
Probably twenty inches at max.
So, the thing, the clay pot's twenty inches taller than the thirty-five feet?
Correct.
So, it's another?
It's another five inches.
We also spoke about eliminating the chimney.
We can always go to, you know, obviously, we've done ventilation fireplaces, you know. I sort of feel that it, for, for this type of style home, it, it suits it well. And obviously, we have to be, you know, within code to, to make it work. If, if it has to be lower, it doesn't, it doesn't quite work. Now, we have been talking about bringing down the eve, so that, that may help us. You know, if we are able to find the twenty inches that I was mentioning earlier, maybe that, that clay pot is not going to be, become an issue anymore. Because we will be able to lower the second floor eve height, which will bring down the volume and the chimney.
Is he gonna need a variance if he doesn't do that to your, to your?
Well, but where's the hardship?
Well, that's what I want, I'm saying. I think it's, he's gonna have to do that.
Yes, you gotta meet that.
Yeah.
And on that twenty-nine, twenty-nine, the chimney was an issue there too since.
On the twenty-nine, twenty-nine, it's actually even, even more so. So, if, if the only way to actually get, get something like that approved is, is through a variance, we're just gonna have to eliminate it from twenty-nine, twenty-nine. If that's the only way that we could get something like that. I think on, on, on that particular project is, is not, is, is not a huge focal point as it is on thirty-five, sixty-five. So, I would be okay with getting, eliminating that, that's no problem.
All right, now, let me, let me understand. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine was approved. You're saying there's an element of it that would require a variance?
We had spoke about it earlier.
Well, I just wanna make sure that the record's clear on the previous huge application that. That element is going to have to be eliminated. So, when you're finished with this, let's go back to twenty-nine, twenty-nine and.
I have, I have several items. So, in regards to this application, I, I have several items as well regarding massing. First of all, I'm not sure if clay pot chimney cap is allowed in the code or not. It wasn't that way in the plan, so I didn't look it up, but I'm not quite sure. We have to examine that for one, one thing. Because we do allow certain chimney caps, other ones we don't allow, so.
But they would need to be counted in the heights.
Right.
They would have to be counted in the height, but whether it's a clay pot chimney is even an acceptable chimney detail.
Have we, is there something in the code that deals with the detail of caps on chimneys? I think it's just height.
It's height, but it's, it's, it's material, it's, yeah, I have to, I just brand new, so I.
Well, it sounds like that feature's going to be eliminated then.
Uh, not on thirty-five, sixty-five. On twenty-nine, twenty-nine, we will.
Well, yes, well, I'm going, we're gonna, we're gonna address, we're gonna stick with this application and then go back to the other application. So, several items. This front entry gate, what's, what's important to people is, is the, is the overall height from the street. And obviously, we raised the finished floor elevation in the gatehouse to the point where the eve is currently fourteen feet. You said you're going to reduce that, but it's gonna take a fairly significant reduction to bring it within the preferred range from the street elevation. As opposed, because right now, the, the building is partially up. And is that something that you're trying to accomplish, bring it within the preferred eve height from the street elevations?
Well, I'm, I'm not quite sure whether it's going to be on the preferred. I would have to take a look at how much we, we are going to be able to bring it down. Obviously, right now is, is about five feet finished floor above the, approximately above the, the road. Bring it down another twelve inches, we'll put it at four feet. And we could probably bring it, you know, about thirteen feet above the road, the eve height. That's, you know, I, I think right now it's at, at fifteen right now. So, two, two feet, we're definitely going to be able to make it work. I don't, I don't see that problem.
Yes, I, I think that we're, I mean, we, we get into a lot of different issues as far as calculating finished floor elevations and that, and that sort of thing, but as far as, I, I know that the, that the town is very concerned about parents amassing and having a gatehouse with any eve height above the preferred range from, you know, roughly the, the road elevation or slightly above it. So, you've got your, the, you know, adequate height of the finished floor is gonna be an issue. So, I think starting at the front of the house, we have the, the wall can't be higher than eight feet above the grade.
Which is correct.
Okay, and this right now is, it's shown at nine feet above grade, in plan, so, so that's, that's the first item.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Remember that we also, we are sloping up from the road to, to the wall. Because obviously, you, you gotta have to try to have a little bit of a, of a, of a slope stone because of the road. It's not drastic, but, you know, it, it's, it's not supposed to be that way, but you're right. It's probably taller, but it's just going to be eight feet exposed.
Okay. And then the next item is the garage, which is, is sitting with eaves at fourteen feet above the surrounding grade. And, and that, once again, because of the nature of the property and, and the slope, we're looking at the garage elevation being very high. No, it is showing a color, that's, yeah, but the, but that is a very tall wall. And also, I believe that having the gabled end on the garage only accentuates the height of the building.
Yeah, we could definitely look, look into lowering the, the garage eve height. May, maybe, maybe that also works, the converting that, that gable into a hip. We, we do have hip, hip roofs through, not, not everywhere, obviously, we do have more gables and hips on, on this style. I will definitely look into doing a hip for the, for the roof of that garage as well, if that helps.
And then, and then the next thing are the gabled ends, which are fine on the rear elevation. I don't have any problem with rear elevation. I mean, that's fitting with the code. But the, the gabled end on the front elevation, the area wide standards is a discouraged item. And I think that maybe bringing the, so the gabled end is above the porch on the second floor on the front elevation. I think we should see how that reads once the, the eaves have been dropped down to the preferred range.
Correct.
But that's, but that's certainly an element. The one thing that, that concerns me in particular are the gabled ends on the sides of the house. Because they, they give, there's the, this wall area in the elevation, the, the north elevation. This is a very large sort of blank wall area with this gabled end at the top. And that is certainly, bringing it down to a hip roof would, would ameliorate some of the, or mitigate some of that large blank wall area that has only one window in it on the second floor.
Okay, I could definitely look into, into that. I don't address that. Maybe, maybe we'll do some other architectural features to break up that wall. I really do like the, the gabled ends, how they clean up, you know, obviously, for the front elevation and for the rear. I'm, I'm not opposed to, to looking into doing a hip there. But maybe lowering, you know, just like you mentioned, lowering the, the eve and maybe looking at, at different architectural features, how to fill in that wall as well would add a little bit more interest.
No, I certainly appreciate that. The, I think these other, the gabled ends on the south elevation, it's much further back into the property, so they don't have as much of an impact on the property's size. But it's really that north elevation that, that gabled end impact.
Correct. Okay.
We have no, any more comments, as far as the, the massing and.
The chimney definitely has directions if it were to be a Mediterranean or a strictly Bermuda. In the, other than those two preferred types, there's no design criteria for the caps or parts of the chimney. But the size doesn't change, the height.
Thank you, Rita. The proposed color for the, the pots on the top of the chimney, would they be the?
It's going to be charcoal gray to match the, the rooftop.
I think that might be another item to cover. Is everybody comfortable with the colors selected for the, the roof? The sides, the materials, et cetera. Is, is, is not, is it a glazed tile or an unglazed tile?
Unglazed.
I just have a, a design concern about the black, because it's, to me, it reads black. It's gonna be so hot, it's gonna attract so much heat. Did you consider having a paler gray?
Black for the, for the roof tile?
Yes, for the roof tile.
Uh, it's, it's a charcoal, it's not black, it's, it's a really dark tile. This is the color of it. It's, it's, it's dark, dark gray. Obviously, with the, with the lines and the grooves, it just appears to be a little darker than, than, but that's what it is.
Maybe see the sample. Is that a sample of the actual material?
Is it, is it identical to what we saw or?
No, it's different.
It's, it's a little bit different, but, you know, it, it's not the one with the, it, it feels a little glossy one side, which shouldn't be. It's, it's not glossy.
Well, this is a sample of the actual.
This is the color, correct. That is the color.
So, this, this is the, for the top?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not the, the actual piece. It's, it's, I don't know why it looks glossy, but it's not going to be glossy. It's just for the color.
I think we need to, we probably need to see the actual tile that's going to be used in the house for the approval process.
That's no problem. That's no problem at all.
You're saying the clay pot will be the identical color to that?
That color, correct.
So, not a terracotta?
No, no. It, it's, it's clay, it's made out of clay, but they're able to finish it in whatever color.
Just a reminder, can, can you summarize once again how we're, we're addressing the chimney?
We spoke about lowering the second floor, the floor to floor height.
Right.
And that's going to give us a little bit of relief there. We also spoke about bringing out, bringing down the, the eve height on the second floor as well. So, we may be finding anywhere between eighteen and twenty-four inches if we can. So, that will basically take care of the clay pot. You know, we, I was saying it was going to be around twenty inches is the clay pot. So, as long as we're able to clear that, or maybe we'll just find a, a smaller clay pot as well that is going to work well with the architecture.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that the board is comfortable with the clay pot. They're saying. You said there was no on British colonial or?
No, I, I understand that, but, I mean, the commission.
I mean, there, there's many different ways that we could finish the, the chimney. We're not stuck by no means on the, on the clay pot. I, I just think it, it, it looks really well. But, you know, we could explore different terminations for the chimney. There's not one right answer for us.
Well, how are we going to, how can we visualize what this house is going to look like in comparison to its two neighbors?
You can't. You'll have to defer this and he'll have to bring it back.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is what really concerns me because of the height of the slope of the land. I mean, the slope of the land, that this is gonna become dumb in your.
When you defer, when you defer this, he can not only bring back his information, but you can have information on the houses to decide too, to see how it looks in comparison. I think that's a good idea for you to look at.
Yes, actually, one of the, one of the things that we don't require every application, because we don't, it's not so much of a question, because this is more level ground, but we do require as part of the review process, a streetscape showing the, the houses on either side of the proposed project. So, I think a streetscape showing the houses either side, this house, just elevation lines.
That is no problem.
Very. Very helping, very some comfort into the, to the project.
Absolutely. I mean, we could also do some, which we already have. I mean, we're getting ready to get a DEP set ready. So, in it, we've done site sections, obviously, showing the total. And we could show a person at the road and, and you'll be able to see sightlines, you know, with the landscape in front of it, with the house behind it. And you'll be able to get a grasp on, on how much of the house you're gonna be able to see as well. You know, not only in a, in a two D streetscape, but also in a, in a section. I think that may illustrate that well, as, as well, which, which we have already.
So, we will provide a two D streetscape showing the, the property, the north property to.
Yes, sir.
With this property with the, the structures on the joint property.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, great. I think that would bring a lot of comfort to the, to the board, as part of the board of the project.
So are we tabling this?
No, we'll make a motion to defer it to a time cert.
Yeah, for them to bring back the project that takes into account all your comments today.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to defer this application to a time cert to take into account the points we've raised here, including the 2D housecape that we discussed and an actual sample of the tile that's going to be used in the construction of this, post-construction of this property.
That time cert would be February the 22nd at eight thirty.
I second that motion. Should we include any other, or we're just going to base it on the comments that have been made regarding the...
Mr. Doggerty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Kent?
Aye. Thank you, Rita.
I, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Shall we look at the landscaping?
Landscaping, that's what I'm saying.
I would, I would like to defer it so that I have a chance to modify the landscaping to go on the revised elevations. I mean, it might change, you know?
I think it makes sense.
No point going through it.
Perfect, that's good. It's your discretion, is that...
Do we need to go back to the chimney?
Yes.
Yes. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine? Okay.
Technically, what you should have is a motion for reconsideration of the previous, of the twenty-nine, twenty-nine application. Somebody makes that motion, then you can open it up for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to revisit, reconsider, reconsider the application for the proposed property at twenty-two, twenty-nine, twenty-nine north ocean.
Second. Rita.
Mr. Doggerty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Kent?
Aye. Thank you, Rita. Okay. We are going back to the application for twenty-nine, twenty-nine. And it was pointed out that the chimney height was, would require a variance. And so we wanted to order reopen before you to make a...
Okay, so, so we, we are proposing to eliminate the chimney completely. Therefore, that if variance is the only way to, to try to get it approved, we'll go ahead and eliminate chimney completely from twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
So to avoid you having to make all those motions again, I would recommend that you, you renew your previous motions with the elimination of the chimney.
Before we go down that route, do we need to see the revised elevations without the chimney? Does it need to come back to us or can it go straight on to the commission?
Revised elevations, he's just going to eliminate the chimney from the elevation.
We want to see the finished elevation when the chimney is taken out. We'll go straight to the...
Well, if that's a concern of yours...
It can be a business question. It would look like it was just a procedure.
Okay, then you can go right to the commission if you're, if you're content with not having your...
Okay.
Okay.
Is somebody else...
If you, I mean, if you all need to see the elevation without the chimney, you should have it compact you. But if you're, it sounds like you've, you really approved everything and all they're going to do is eliminate the chimney. How is that going to be able to help?
I think we're just concerned under procedural basis.
It was a procedural point, yes.
Processually, it's fine to go straight to the commission.
Straight to the commission, perfect. Okay.
Okay. So skip what were the words, please?
I think you were going to renew your previous motion.
Okay.
Subject to the elimination of the chimney.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to review the previous motions subject to the removal of the chimneys presented on the application. I'll second that.
Mr. Doggerty? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Kent?
Aye. Thank you, Rita. Very well done. Thank you very much. Carlos, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move now to three on the agenda. Application submitted by Miuw Associates, an agent for BW North Ocean Inc. Owner of the property located in 1330 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida. Will be described as a block seven and seven A. Reply of the Donald B. McLeese subdivision reported in the flat book twenty-five, page sixty-seven, public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, for the following: At a level-two architectural site plan review, a four hundred and forty-two square foot extension of the existing roof over the existing poolside patio on the west side of the existing Bermuda-style one-story single-family residence. And we'll be, we'll be presenting the, the...
Frank had not been sworn in yet, Frank.
We have another one back here. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Good morning. My name is David Frank, resident of the building. And as was stated, we're intent to add an expansion of the existing covered patio, four hundred and fifty-two square feet. In the process, we want to eliminate two columns here and carry the new structure with a recessed ivy up inside the roof. It is only really visible from the, from the intercoastal. It's tucked in between the two legs of the rear of the house. And then elevation. We intend to pick up, the house says currently has a dual pitch roof, it's a three-twelve now. I think it's a seven-twelve. We intend to use the three-twelve pitch roof to match that pitch to right up on top of the existing seven-twelve pitch roof. So we don't extend too high or go above the existing roof that's already there.
So it's going to be...
It's covered but not enclosed.
Correct. It's just an extension of the existing covered patio, along the curves of the pool.
The, any proposed columns, are we...
Nothing, no.
Nothing pulling up?
Yeah, well, we've got the recess beam up inside the roof structure itself. This is a small section of how it's going to recess up inside. Currently, there's two columns that are in this, I'm sorry, yeah, this area right here, which we're going to eliminate. So there'll be no columns at all. And I think the new roof material, which will cover the entire roof, the existing roof, and the new proposed covered patio, is approved.
So you are replacing the entire roof?
Yeah.
We're just talking about the permitting, the four hundred, the extension of the roof.
Correct. It does fall within the Florida ratio, I guess, under that.
Okay. And the feel of it will be, I mean, it's sort of hard to tell from this elevation, but it doesn't contain very much. Is it, is it more, is it in keeping with the current architecture of the house?
Yeah, like I said, we picked up the existing structure, the existing pitch of the three-twelve overhang and continued that up. So yes, I would say it does.
Well, that's in regards to roof, but the, but the elements, I mean, this does show, but it's hard to read what these, these are columns or the ends of walls or, but it does appear to have a lot of columns.
Those, that's the, they've got these columns around here. Yeah, that's a trellis area.
I see, so that's, that's the...
That's existing, yes.
Other roofs don't, the new...
Well, they do right up, because, because of the curved overhang, they do create a, a arch on top of the existing roof. Each crest is a little bit longer than the next one, a little bit shorter. So there's not inconsistency created to the line. So they do right up at higher elevation where deeper the crest is.
It's, it's this, it's the nature of the house, you're not, you're not looking at one side. It's the nature of the elevation.
That's looking from the intercoastal.
I think it's pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any concerns or comments about that?
I'll make a motion. Motion to recommend approval of a level-two architectural site plan based on a finding that the proposed construction of a four hundred and forty-two square foot extension of the existing roof over the existing poolside patio on the west side of the existing Bermuda-style one-story single-family residents meet the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards.
Mr. Chairman? On this motion, I'm sorry, I didn't...
All right, great.
Make my comment before you made the motion. It actually should read, a motion to approve a level-two architectural site plan because you are the final arbiter on this. So my apologies for not touching it before.
That's okay. I'll, I'll make a new motion. Motion to approve a level-two architectural site plan based on a finding that the proposed construction of a four hundred and forty-two square foot extension of the existing roof over the existing poolside patio on the west side of the existing Bermuda-style one-story single-family residents meet the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards.
I'll second that.
Rita?
Mr. Doggerty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Kent?
Yes. Okay. Item number four on the agenda, how are we dealing with that? Number four is an application submitted by Dave Bodker Landscape, Architectural Planning Inc., an agent for Paul and Nancy, Zara Capadulas, owners of property located in fifteen fifty seven North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida. Legally prescribed as the south half of block four and the north half of block five, block D, revised platter of block D and E, Palm Beach Shore Acres. Item A is the North Ocean Boulevard overlay corridor permit to allow the re-landscaping of the entire corridor at thirteen fifty seven North Ocean Boulevard. And item B is a level-three architectural review. Site plan review to permit the re-landscaping of the entire landscape area of this property. Nice project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Dave Bodker, Dave Bodker, Landscape Architecture Plan, six oh one, Congress Avenue, Delaware Beach, Florida. I am representing Paul and Nancy's Archadulus residents at thirteen fifty seven North Ocean Boulevard. And our presentation includes a new entrance wall along A1A. It's going to be a masonry wall and along its length it will have this cast concrete fretwork. You may be able to see better on your small phone. The fretwork and the wall will be painted white. The entrance drive will be flanked by two columns that are seven foot, two and a half inches tall. The gate itself is an opaque gate and it's going to be made of aluminum tungened roof, also painted white. The driveway itself, except for the first five feet, which will be VOP asphalt, of course, will be white concrete with turf joints between it. And I have a picture of a similar project that was done, that's in detail.
Will that be an artificial term for...
It will be. The planting on A1A will have Sylvester day palms flanking the entrance drive. I don't know if you can see it here and here, or here and here on the plan. The Sylvester day palms will be underplanted with annuals, fox tail asparagus fern, variety. And to the north of the entrance, we're proposing to leave one existing group of sea grapes here, but we're adding three coconut palms here, here, and here. And those will be underplanted with pelotonia. We'll have bougainvillea on the fretwork sections of the wall. Additional planting is variety, protens. Inside the wall or behind the wall, on the interior of the property, there's some existing Montgomery palms here. And we're going to put elephant ear or aleatacea up against the backside of the wall. And it'll have a tier of variety in front of it pointing inside. The driveway itself will have an alley of coconut palms, so that comes through here and here. There is one existing sea grape here that we'll leave in place. And those coconut palms will be underplanted with protens as well. In the northwest section of the front yard, there are three existing huge banyan trees, which we plan on leaving. And on the north and south property lines in the front yard, there's some existing arica palms along the property line and we'll add to those so that there's complete privacy in the front yard. Additional planting in the front yard on the inside of the arica palms. It's a real tropical look that these folks are after, so we are putting in pelotonias and elephant ear, purple tower, protens. Flanking the front entrance walk through the residence itself, there's additional Sylvester day palms. So those occur here and here. In the backyard, we're filling the property. It's eroded on the extreme north and south quite a bit. So we're going to plant twenty-foot-high sea grape trees on either side. And in front of those or into the interior of the property, those will add additional coconut palms and flusia hedge. There's two tiers of planting before you get to the beach area. There's going to be low masonry walls to frame these areas. So that's right in here and right in here. And we're proposing eighteen-inch-high sea grape shrubs in those two areas. Then flanking the entrance to the beach walk, there are coconut palms. And there's two coconut palms at either corner of that detail. And that wraps it up. So any questions you may have?
Jessica, if you could comment on the lighting as part of the...
Yeah, we're proposing uplighting on the plan. This has been through DEP and been approved. We're using amber lights in the backyard. We'll do some additional uplighting in the front yard on the Sylvester, excuse me, the Sylvester day palms. And some, we're going to try to do kind of a moonlighting effect from the big banyan trees in the front as well.
Will that be uplighting or will the lights be in the trees?
We actually want to get someone up in the trees and shine the lights down so it does look like a moonlighting effect coming through the banyan tree. The Zara Capadulas have children, so they see this, these banyan trees as a great place for kids to play.
And the, and the lights will all be shielded, all the fixtures, because you do have a fixture in here, but the fixtures will be shielded so no light will be visible.
Yeah, it's, it's been through DEP approved, so we have this proper lighting that they will require.
Any comments?
When I'm looking at the overlay of the, that yard and looking at the rear yard which faces the ocean, it looks as if you take away quite a lot of the natural existing dune plantation in order to extend the garden. Is that just my imagination or...
I don't know. If you can see underneath, we superimpose this Photoshop rendering on top of an actual aerial photograph. So what you see here is existing sea grape on either side. This wall right here is an existing wall, but it extends all the way through the property. We're just curing it up right here. And then we're putting back sea grape, which is already there.
The erosion, because you said it was on the, well, the north and the south corners, the erosion was beginning.
Right now, this pool extends out into this area of the yard a little bit. And then there's a flat yard, but it drops off probably about twelve feet from this property line. For whatever reason, about two feet below grade. And so again, the Zarcadulus family wants more lawn for the kids to play in, so we're going to regrade that. There's actually existing sea grapes in here now. We're, there's one big one right here we're going to try to leave in place. But there's no way to raise the grade without taking out those existing sea grapes. So as I said, our intention is to plant twenty-five, not twenty-foot-high sea grapes back in their place once we lift that grade. And there's an existing wall along this property.
And the relocating, there's a relocating... Let's see. They have a little, was there any relocation of any structure behind the house?
No.
Let's see. Relocated covered porch.
Yeah, that's part of the architecture. This, of course, I should have said in the beginning, this is an existing column. And it's been approved, permitted to have it renovated. They're changing the appearance of this house. And, but it apparently didn't have to come through here because of level one.
Assume no neighbor, Rita, neighbor comments?
Yes, there was, a gentleman next door came in. And in fact, Mr. Bodker came and met with him. And there was just a typographical error on one of the drawings. He was under the impression that was the Australian pine.
Right.
It was actually the surveyor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We didn't make him say that.
I wanted to throw that out.
Thank you very much.
The surveyor.
There, there's actually a small group of existing Australian pines right in here. And we are proposing to remove those existing, their stumps and so forth. But for whatever reason, the surveyor labeled the existing arica palms as existing Australian pines. And so this gentleman had an issue with it, so. But I wanted to head that off before we got to this point, so we've had to have filmed it.
And so he was very happy with it. The news that... So he didn't have any issues.
Good, perfect. Thank you, Rita.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the North Ocean Boulevard overlay corridor permit to allow the re-landscaping on the entire corridor, Act one three five seven. Norfolk should board under the following condition: One, any minor modifications to the approved landscape plan shall be submitted to the town manager for review and approval. Any major modifications to the approved, to the approved landscape plan shall be brought back to the AARPB for review and approval prior to commencement of landscaping.
Second, that.
Mr. Doggerty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Kent?
Act, and the further motion to recommend approval of a Level Three Architectural Site Plan based on a finding that proposed re-landscaping to an existing landscape plan meets the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards for the following condition: Any minor modifications to the approved landscape plan should be submitted to the town manager for review and approval. Any major modifications to the approved landscape plan should be brought back to the AARPB for review and approval prior to commencement of landscaping.
Second, that.
Mr. Doggerty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Kent?
Aye. Thank you very much, it's a beautiful landscape plan. That is really...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the public section of our meeting. Item seven is the continued review of the discouraged items of chapter seventy. I think it was, the feeling was that we'd wait till the next meeting to really dive into this, into that project. So if we can just move on to that item. Item eight, items by staff?
Oh, we don't have any additional orders today?
No, okay. Really? Any items by board members? No, okay, thank you. And our fellow members, abandon.
We could take a push.
And I guess I live at the edge there.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Hopefully, that was one heck of a...
I was stronger than the last one.
Well, my, how often did the last one go?
Four things.
My first meeting, two, oh, we got out of here at lunch. Oh, this is one o'clock, tee-off.
It's a very good time.
And we've got to check all my packing when I do the record.
Well, we're talking about that. I know that's...
That's a good thing. That's going to be pathetic, maybe.